Okay, folks, ready? Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Presentation of Colors, and we'll be having then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whom thy feet and justice are all.
Please post the colors.
Color go. Forward. Mark. Other. Thanks. Forward. Mark.
Please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on those serving in the United States Armed Forces, both past and present. The elected leaders for the state of Pennsylvania and elected leaders of our nation. We have much to be thankful for in our community. Please be seated. Item 3.1, Executive Session. There was an executive session Monday, September 12th, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the Administration Building Boardroom to discuss real estate matters. And the evening, Monday, September 26th, 2016, at 6:15 in the high school library to discuss personnel and legal matters. Item 4, 4.1, Student Government Executive Council President's Report, and you are not Jacob Buckwalter.
We have Jen Weston here with us this evening.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay. Students from many clubs and organizations are getting ready for an exciting homecoming season. Student Government is hosting a Spirit Week competition during the first week of October to help students show their OJR spirit. The Gay Straight Alliance had their first meeting of the year and had a record attendance of 35 students. The club will be celebrating Ally Week starting September 26th to promote friendship and support the LGBTQ students. The Wildcat ambassadors hosted a tour for alumni of the class of 1971 on Saturday, September 17th. The ambassadors and alumni had a great afternoon together. The alumni especially enjoyed the opportunity to view items in the Archives Room and the Athletic Wing, thanks to Mr. Bretts. Middle school sports and extracurricular activities are off to a great start with a significant amount of their student enrollment participating in marching band, color guard, soccer, field hockey, football, cross-country, and after-school clubs. Students and staff are gearing up for October and their first school dance on October 21st. Collectively, students at East Vincent read over 570,000 minutes this past summer. Mr. Oswald made good on his promise to allow the students to try and dunk him if they made reading over the summer a priority. Grade 6 students participated in the recent Unity Day where they were challenged to develop leadership skills, problem-solving skills, and work collaboratively. East Vincent Elementary students started the school year excited to be back and amazed at the progress on their construction of their new school during the summer months. Students are presently signing up and/or trying out for a host of activities, including Run 101, First Lego League, K Kids Chorus Band Orchestra, Special Arts Projects, and Grade 6 Safety Patrols. 6th grade students demonstrated leadership and good citizenship at the beginning of the school year by providing assistance to kindergarten students as they exited the building at dismissal and navigated their way to the buses. 6th grade students offered a helping hand to ensure that younger students found their buses with ease. The entire French Creek School community celebrated the new school year with the PTA's Annual Ice Cream Social, with over 600 people in attendance. Teachers and staff support staff served as celebrity scoopers, and it was a wonderful evening had by all. Students were delighted to meet Peaches and Rufus at the start of the school year. The two pups are therapy dogs in training, who will soon serve as ambassadors for our Reading Dog Program. At North Coventry, 6th grade students participated in a day of games and activities designed to promote respect, responsibility, and peer-pressure relationships. The day-long program was run by Jay Bechtel and Cindy Gudzicki from Experiential Dynamics, an organization that specializes in providing hands-on activities that build communication, decision-making, problem-solving, and cooperation skills. West Vincent 6th grade ATP students have created a new way to present the daily announcements in the building. They are filming the announcements via newscast. Their goal is to send the weekly announcements through a YouTube link that can be projected in each classroom. It's creative, engaging, and very well-received. Sarah Weber, the West Vincent Guidance Counselor, is busy developing and implementing a mentorship program. Each student will be assigned to a group that will be made up of the same group leader and groupmates during their entire year here at West Vincent. The groups will meet up to four times throughout the year. Meetings will focus on social slash emotional topics such as kindness, empathy, and friendship.
Thank you, Jen, wonderful job. Appreciate you pinch-hitting tonight. Item 4.2, Superintendent's Report. Our district enrollment for the start of this 2016-17 school year is 5,301 students. Last week, I sent a Sky Alert to all district families regarding our delayed start slash teen sleep study. We'll be developing and creating a committee organized of relevant stakeholders, including parents from elementary to high school, teachers and administrators, to help assist with this process that will ultimately lead to a survey for our community and a recommendation to the board. Representatives from the Chester County Intermediate Unit, Student Forum, who explored student opinions and insights on later start times for high school students, will be presenting to the school board at the October Committee of the Whole on the 10th of October at 6:00 PM, and that location has changed from North Coventry to the middle school LGI. On October 1st, we will have our 47th Annual Cavalcade of Bands. Special guest appearance by OJR alumni, Three Shades of Blue, After the Cavalcade. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Christian. Item 5.1, Public Comment on Agenda Items. Information, proposals, and statements from individuals or delegations pertaining to items on the agenda. Speakers are to indicate your name, township of residence, and the item on the agenda to which your comments are addressed. Speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Okay, seeing none? Item 6, 6.1, Committee of the Whole. A meeting of the Committee of the Whole was held September 12th, 2016, at 6:00 PM in the Administration Building Boardroom. The following committee met at this time, Curriculum and Instruction. Buildings and Grounds, Mrs. Booth.
Good evening. This is a little off my message. The next B&amp;G meeting will be Monday, October 3rd, which is only a week away, and that will be at 6:00 PM in the Administration Building Boardroom. It's a big night for us. I'm just going to quickly read what our agenda items are today, but one of them in particular makes a lot of us happy. It's been a very hard task to get done, but we've at least gotten to this point. Anyway, agenda items tonight for Buildings and Grounds. Item 13.1 is the approval of a three-year transportation of school students with gross school bus service, a new contract, three years in length. Item 13.11, Construction Change Order Considering With ER Stubner on the East Vincent School. But the following items all regard: The East Coventry Elementary School Facility Project. Item 13.12, We are going to move and approve, or we're going to at least vote, on the approval of intent-to-award bids. We're very happy about this. We're not quite where we want to be, but it's very thrilling to be here. And I want to thank everybody who's worked very hard on this, as well as some of the patients from East Coventry supervisors. We'll just say thank you to them, anyway. And then the rest are resolutions that all have to do with the new East Coventry School Project. Okay, thank you, that's enough.
Thank you. Item 6.3, Chester County Intermediate Unit. Mrs. Barkus.
The Chester County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors held its monthly meeting on September 21st at the Gordon Early Literacy Center in Coatesville. The Gordon Early Literacy Center is unlike any other preschool program in the region. It serves 320 preschool children who reside in the Coatesville area. Children have access to instructional technology services, and it supports all of their meals during the time that they're there. It hosts about 18 classrooms, and they provide preschool-related services such as occupational, physical, and speech therapy, and specialized instruction. The CCIU will operate nine Head Start classrooms and four preschool specialization classrooms in that building. And Coatesville Area School District will run four preschool classrooms, and the United Way will pilot a uniting neighbors, impacting families, and youth classroom. All of the classrooms at the center will incorporate, will be incorporated together seamlessly, working together and training for the children's purposes. When I went to this building, I had foreseen our use of what we are trying to do and possibilities for at East Coventry. And one thing about this particular building, because basically what it was, was an elementary school that they refurbished, and now they're using it to serve multiple programs, is because they have a high Head Start program need in that area, they threw the pinpoints up, and they picked a location with the most pinpoints, so like red spots. So I asked, okay, so where else in the county do you have a need for this? And Phoenixville is pretty close, and there's a high need there. So just something, some food for thought, because it's the Coatesville Area School District's preschool program. It's the IU Special Ed preschool program. It's Head Start, and then they got a huge grant from United Way. And that's how the building became what it is. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. It was really cool to see, actually, because all the teachers are working with each other, and you wouldn't know the difference between a Head Start room and a Coatesville room. And all the standards are set extremely high. So it was great to see. I just also wanted to report that even with the delay at TCHS Pickering, we opened two days late, but we're going. Had some issues today, but I want to state publicly that everything is safe and sound, and students are going back tomorrow. And that concludes my report. Our next meeting is Wednesday, October 19th, at 7:30 at the Child and Career Development Center in Coatesville. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Barkus. Item 6.4, Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Mr. LaCuff.
Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met as part of the Committee of the Whole meeting on September 12th at the Administration Building. There was one informational agenda item for the meeting. Dr. Acosta shared information about the District's 339 Plan, which outlines guidance services and career education at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Dr. Soder discussed the summer programs that were offered to students. This included summer courses, recreational camps, Jump Start, and Kinder Camp. Dr. Monahan shared information about professional development for new teachers who attended the induction program. Mr. Fletcher reviewed the curriculum projects for the summer. Dr. Soder also spoke about potential changes for the Keystone graduation requirement. When more information is available, an update will be provided to the committee. The district is currently waiting for the release of the new school performance scores. We should have them Thursday. And we will release them as soon as they're available. The next Curriculum and Instruction Committee is scheduled as part of the Committee of the Whole meeting on October 10th at 6:00 PM in the middle school. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. LaCuff. Item 6.5, Finance Committee. Mr. Freeze. Thank you, Mr. Freeze. 6.6, Legislative and Policy Committee. Mr. Kleinfeldter.
Thank you, Mrs. Wolf. The Legislative and Policy Committee met on Monday, August 22nd, 2016, at 8:15 PM in the High School LGI Room. Three policies were reviewed. 247, which deals with hazing. 803, which is the policy for building the school calendar, and Policy 818 for contracted services. These policies are on the agenda as Item 7.7, for first reading tonight. The committee also reviewed the Record Retention Disposition Schedule that's attached to Policy 800 that determines when records are, how long records are kept or when they're disposed of. The next Legislative and Policy Committee meeting will be held on Monday, October 3rd, 2016, immediately following the Buildings and Grounds Committee report, approximately 7:00 PM in the Administration Building Boardroom. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kleinfeldter. Item 6.7, Personnel Committee. Mr. Hughes. Thank you. Okay, Item 7, Recommended Routine Matters. 7.1, I need a motion to approve recommended routine matters. These are consent items 7.2 through 7.7. Mr. Kleinfeldter.
Second.
Mr. LaCuff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 8.1, Approval of Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Mr. LaCuff. Mrs. Booth, any discussion on the meeting minute? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board Communication, 9.1. Is there any board communication?
No communication, Madam President.
Thank you. Item 10.1, Board Discussion. Any board discussion from the board members?
Madam President, I have a few items, and for the sake of time, I'll try to be brief as I can. First item really is a request for information. Do we have any Battle of the Bands signs that are like yard signs, realtor signs? I got a spot on 100 to stick one up.
What, you're asking for Battle of the Bands to put on Route 100?
Yeah, I didn't know if there was any available.
There is one. Isn't there one on 100?
Cavalcade, but this is...
It was just, I mean, there's a spot I could put it up.
Cavalcade or...
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
One on 100 now.
Yeah, okay, well, if there was another one, I'd put one up, that's all.
Okay.
And I wanted to ask Mrs. Booth and, I guess, the architects as well. Sometime back, I had a discussion with a colleague from PSBA about the automatic electronic defibrillators, and was told that you had to have them in a school, or it was recommended that you have them in a school, that anywhere in the building you could run and bring them back in, I think, 45 seconds. So do we have plans? I don't know if that number's correct. It might be one-way, so 45 seconds to where it is, and 45 seconds to the furthest corner. So do we have plans to have those properly placed in the new buildings and in the current buildings?
So I'll let, if we need Dr. Acosta to comment, I'll direct it to her. But a couple years ago, we had that discussion, and we added AEDs to the backs of the larger buildings, the high school and middle school. We also have them in our security vehicles, if needed. And we have a, since the elementary schools are smaller, that 45 seconds is more attainable.
Right.
And we also have a schedule for rotating, replacing them with new batteries, which we have implemented as well. And I can have Dr. Acosta put the whole plan together and send it out to the board. But we have addressed it and continue to monitor it.
Good. I was thinking with the new construction, we've got to keep that in mind. And Dr. Marquini offered to race me through the buildings for 45 seconds, but I don't think I want to take him up on that one. Quickly, on the 22nd, I attended a legislative roundtable at William 10 and High School. There was a lot of local legislators there. Some were missing, but there was a good turnout. And 107 people showed up altogether, school board members, superintendents. And the main topic was the effect of charter schools on our public school system. And we really enlightened the legislators. I mean, there's a lot of things they didn't realize. There's unintended consequences with charter law, things that have to be fixed. They do things that if we did them, we would violate state law. For example, budgeting. They don't have any limit to how much money they can carry in reserves, where we're limited to 8%. It was an enlightening evening for all of us, and I hope some good comes out of it. And finally, PSBA in concert with PSEA and PASA began a program called Success Starts Here to trumpet the stories that we have in public education that show what we're doing for our students and how we can help them succeed. It has been getting statewide recognition in the media and a lot of feedback on social media, a very positive response to that program. We already have some of these window clings for the doors, and I know I offered to get some for us, but unfortunately, the ones they have now, if you put them in your car window, your window's tinted, you don't see them. We're going to have magnetic signs, and I don't know if PSEA gets any of those, but I'll get as many as I can for OJR from PSBA. And one important aspect to the campaign is school districts have begun to send in their success stories on video. There were a couple that started the program. The thing about the first graders programming robots was immensely well-received. And the three groups, PSBA, PSEA, and PASA, are soliciting districts to find out success stories that will highlight how good we do in public education. And thank you for your indulgence. That includes my discussion section.
Does anybody else have any discussion items? Yes, Mrs. Barkus.
I'd like to ask two quick questions with regards to the F&amp;G score. Are we discussing last year's December debt and October at the Committee of the Whole as well?
Yes.
And then when you say they're released Thursday, are they released to the districts Thursday, or are they completely released on the second Thursday?
It's a preliminary review for districts, and then districts have the ample opportunity to ask questions about the calculations before they're released statewide.
Any other discussion from the board? Okay. Item 11.1, Old Business. There is none. Item 12, 12.1, Motion to Approve Personnel Matters. These are consent items 12.2 through 12.14. Do we have any abstentions or...
Yes, Mrs. Wolf, if we can separate 12.14...
Oh, okay, yes.
Just hold, or just hold that.
Okay.
So we'll do 12.1 through 12.1...
Thanks, Mr. Kleinfeldter. 12.1 through 12.13?
Unless there's any other.
No others? Okay, that'll be a consent item, and then we'll do 12.14 separately. Okay. Motion to Approve Personnel Matters. Consent items 12.2 through 12.13?
So moved.
Mr. Kleinfeldter, Mr. Hughes, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12.14, Approval to Rescind Appointments. Mr. LaCuff? Second. Mrs. Booth? Mr. Kleinfeldter will register as an abstention. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. It seemed to be going awfully fast. Did we do every... yeah, yes, we did. That's not too bad. Okay. 13 is New Business. 13.1, Approval of Resolution Local Chamber of Commerce Month, October 2016. Mr. Hughes? Mrs. Booth? Shall I read the whereas's? I don't have to read the whereas's. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 13.2, Approval of the 2017 PSBA Officers and At-Large Representative.
So moved.
So it'll be Kleinfeldter and Booth and Mr. LaCuff. Will you be...
Mrs. Barkus.
That was Barkus.
Barkus, I'm sorry. I said Mrs. Hughes. I need more than just water. Okay, so Mr. LaCuff. I just need to know if you're abstaining.
I don't think I need to.
No. You can vote for yourself.
Yeah, you can vote for yourself.
Okay.
There's two things. It's not just PSBA officers. It's also trustees for the insurance trust.
Yes.
And the title of the motions. Sorry about that. There's two sects of, there's two elections here, and we only list the one. I just, it's sort of a typo. The R officers and at-large representative, well, actually, we don't have an at-large representative in the east this cycle. And the four names there, I'm sorry, five names that are listed as trustees, they're trustees for the insurance trust, not officers of PSBA.
Okay.
So whoever made the motion, I'll make an amendment to that motion if you accept it.
Yes, okay. Amendment accepted? And who was our second? Mrs. Barkus. It's contagious. Any other discussion? Now that I've made everybody confused. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.3, Approval of a Confidential Settlement Agreement and Release. Mrs. Booth? Mrs. Barkus? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.4, Approval of the District Chapter 339 Plan.
So moved.
Mr. LaCuff? Mrs. Booth, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13.5, Ratification of Homebound Instruction. Mrs. Barkus? Mrs. Booth, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.6, Approval to Establish a Student Activity Account. Mrs. Barkus? Mr. Kleinfeldter, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.7, Approval of Out-of-State Overnight Student Trips. Mrs. Booth? Mr. Kleinfeldter, any discussion? Yes. We're very fortunate in this area to be able to provide all these overnight trips. Any other discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.8, Approval of Student Activity Clubs and Organizations.
So moved.
Mr. LaCuff? Mrs. Barkus, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.9, Approval of Agreement for Transportation of School Pupils. Mrs. Booth? Mr. Freeze, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 13.10, Approval of Conference Attendance. Mr., who was that? Mr. Hughes? Second, Mr. Kleinfeldter, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.11, Approval of a Construction Change Order.
So moved.
Mrs. Booth? Mr. Kleinfeldter? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.12, Approval for Intent for Award of Bid for East Coventry Elementary School Facility Improvement Project.
So moved.
Yay. Mrs. Booth?
Second.
Mrs. Barkus? Any discussion on East Coventry? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13.3, Approval of Resolution Number 2016 to 122 and Final Land Development Agreement in Form for the East Coventry Elementary School.
So moved.
Mrs. Booth?
Second.
Mr. Hughes? Discussion?
That's quite a document, too.
But it's a document, yay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.14, Approval for Submission of Plan Con F Attachment C Post-Bid Opening Certificate.
So moved.
Mrs. Booth?
Second.
Mrs. Barkus? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.15, Approval of Construction Testing Services.
So moved.
Mrs. Booth?
Second.
Mrs. Barkus? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 13.16, Ratification Approval of Professional Services and/or Maintenance Agreements. Mr. Kleinfeldter?
Second.
Mrs. Barkus? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 14, Public Comment. 14.1, Public Comment. And I will read that as soon as it pops up. And it's not popping up. Well, what you have here is the public may comment on any item that is not on the agenda and, what, shall I read that? Okay. Information Proposals, thank you. Statements and/or Questions from Individuals or Delegations pertaining to any item, whether they're on the agenda or not. Speakers are to indicate name, township of residence, and speakers will be limited to not more than three minutes. Thank you, Dr. Christian. Do we have comment? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Kathy DiMarino. I'm from North Coventry. And thank you so much for hearing my comments. You may recall that I've been here before to be an advocate for our later start time for teenagers. And I'm so pleased that a committee is being formed to look at this topic. I've read a lot of articles on this subject and I have not been able to find any research that refutes the claim that teenagers have a, have a difficulty with sleep loss because of shift in their circadian rhythms. So I'm pleased about this committee and I, but I don't know much about it. And I'm hoping that whoever's setting the goals for the committee would seriously consider having medical professionals come in to speak about the current research. I really think that it's important for parents and teachers and administrators to hear directly from experts. Like I said, I've read a lot of information about this, but I recognize that I'm not an expert. And I really would like to be fully informed and I'm sure all the parents, teachers and administrators in this district feel the same way. They want to know all the, all the research and what, how it pertains to their families. So we're talking about something so important as our kids' long-term health. I just hope that careful attention will be given to making sure that we have top experts to speak to us about this topic. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. DiMarino. Any other comments?
Good evening, Madam President. Dr. Christian, members of the board, members of the public.
And again, your name and township.
Cheryl Hertzog. You know me.
But not everybody here.
Cheryl Hertzog, Warwick Township.
Warwick.
Thank you for listening to our group's advocacy. Thank you for listening to our concerns about healthy hours for our students. Thank you for taking the first steps towards giving this very important issue the attention that it deserves, announcing the formation of a committee to study the issue and inviting the CCIU Student Forum to present on October 10th. I hope everybody will come to present their findings to our district. I really appreciate you opening that to everyone. It's fantastic. So whether you see the effects of this biological shift in adolescents' sleep, wake and sleep, wake and sleep rhythms in your own homes, in your own children, or not, I believe that the research is now extremely clear that inadequate sleep in our adolescents is a serious public health issue. You have taken positive action in the direction of addressing this. I applaud you for that. Thank you for taking this serious issue seriously with the intention of promoting the best possible environment for our students. We can ensure that they will not only survive their high school experience, but they will thrive in all aspects of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hertzog. Any other public comment?
Lisa Deal from Warwick Township. I want to thank all of you for approving the Wildcats Ice Hockey Club. It's been a long time coming and they're very excited to be part of the activities here at OJR now. Just for a little background, we currently have 84 students in the district participating because we have three elementary school teams, two middle school teams, and three high school I would like to request information on the impact testing for the high school level. I did request information from Mr. Brettz twice now. He sent me the pricing, but he has yet to inform me of how many students are currently participating. So I don't know whether we need to buy in or whether there's tests that the school's already paying for that we can utilize. At the high school, we currently have 28 players, so it would be a total of 28 tests that we would need. And I don't, I spoke to the impact testing and we currently have a package for 800 tests, but the impact testing people said they allow for 20% overage. So we're actually covered for 960 tests. They wouldn't charge anything until you reach that number of tests. And at that point, it's $2 per student. So we just need to know whether we need to buy in or if they're available already.
I'll have Dr. Marquini and Mr. Brettz follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hurry up, I almost missed you.
The people in red you see here tonight represent over 400 members of the REA. We're here once again to encourage you to provide a fair contract for our athletic trainers. For almost two years, the REA has been waiting for you to do what's right and to agree to a fair contract. A contract that recognizes the importance of our trainers to our student athletes. A contract that recognizes the importance of our trainers to the families who depend on them to provide the critical health service. A contract which tells the REA that the kind of words this board uses periodically are not mere rhetoric. Our athletic trainers are an essential part of our athletic program. We take great pride in that program and the number of kids that participate in it. The board should take care to ensure that our trainers remain fully invested in our community by providing them a fair contract. If you are unsure as to what our trainers do every day, please ask. Ask the kids that receive their services every day. Ask the parents of those student athletes how the trainers ensure their child's health. Ask the trainers. And finally, please ask one another, all those sitting at this table, while after almost two years, our trainers still have not been shown the respect they deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Just a quick comment. We, too, have been having lengthy discussions and working through it so we understand how long it takes to make the right decision. Any other public comment?
My name is Samantha Kress. I'm in East Vincent School District. I go to this high school. I just wanted to voice my concerns about the recent behavior of the cat pack. Last year, they had a few issues. I know students were bringing alcohol onto campus and coming to football games intoxicated. And last week, or this past Friday, was the elementary school night at the football game. And I just thought it was a major concern that the students were being extremely disrespectful, yelling obscenities at some people walking by. They were throwing food at people, splashing them with water or soda, and throwing the empty bottles at people. And they were kicked out of the game during the third quarter. They were being very disrespectful, playing with the band instruments that were left in the stands when the band students went to eat dinner. And also, after all the cat pack was removed from the football game, they left this stadium a mess. And I know this behavior has been happening for a while and I just wanted to voice my concerns, make it more public, and I think that they should be addressed.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you, Samantha. I'll follow up with Dr. Marquini, Mr. Brettz in the morning. We want all of our students to be fine representatives of the school district and having a cat pack and abiding by the Pac-10 sportsmanship bylaws is crucial for OJR and all of the Pac- Pioneer Athletic Conference schools. So we will follow up and uphold the fine name of OJR Roberts and its student body.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. 15.1, Board Request for Information?
I have a request. I'd like the IT Department to investigate if Board Docs had another denial of service attack tonight. But not, you don't have to tell me tonight.
We can't get it. Why are we doing this all the way? I tried it three, the last time this happened, I tried it three or four times before the meeting and by the fifth time, I was able to get it and I did the same thing tonight.
I kept it, I got in, but like it was so slow. I couldn't pull up. It didn't...
We care for all the students.
Yeah, I've got my...
So we will have, this is the second time in three meetings, we'll have paper copies of all the agendas back up. But I'm going to ask, we talked to Board Docs twice after the last meeting. We're going to invite them out for a meeting to go over it with our IT department. So we have a, it hasn't been a problem in previous years, but we need to rectify it.
Well, they acknowledged, I believe, that they were attacked last time, but this was not as bad, but it was a similar effect.
Can we talk? Wait, can I, I just talk? I just, I want to address the young lady who came up to speak because I want her to know that I saw the cat pack and what happened, but also what was happening on the other side of our stadium with the other schools' student section. And I just, I want you to know that I already did alert Dr. Christian and he already did, you know, start to look into it. So I want you to know that we are looking out for you guys also. That, that was noticed on Friday night.
Ms. McCrory? Any other requests for information?
I have a very simple request. Again, it has to do with clubs, extracurricular activities. What is the student threshold, number-wise, before we initiate or keep clubs going? Is there a threshold where it gets down below certain student interest?
It's not, not defined per activity. It really depends, too, what the club is, how many members they're seeking to have. But we'll take, we can take a look at what our, what our average is.
It's not a complaint, it's just curiosity. I would like to know what those, if there is any kind of prerequisite for numbers of attendance or...
Sure. They all keep minutes and take notes and have attendance and, and we track those because students will also put that on their transcripts for colleges. So, and they have to attend so many meetings per each club to stay in the club. So, but we're fortunate to have strong attendance in many of our, if not all of our clubs.
Yeah. All right. Now, I just want to make sure that, that we don't carry clubs that no longer carry as much interest so that we don't have opportunity to offer clubs of new interest. I'm just, it's just a matter of curiosity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Booth.
And I have one request.
Mr. Kleinfeldter?
If, if Mrs. Kremrein can send out the spreadsheet of all the bids for East Coventry and Board Line.
Sure.
That would be fine.
The bid tabulation?
Yeah, all, would be all categories. So general contractor, air condition, electric.
Aren't they in Board Docs already? There's a summary letter. There's not a... At all. It's just a summary letter. It's a summary letter that, but it doesn't have all of the contractors... I'm sorry, I misunderstood.